John is going in the office.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the mute that uh good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the virtual full Board of Alderman meeting for October tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I'd also like to introduce our mayor for the day Xavier Calvo, who's in the mayor's office, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
Everybody stand.
I pledge allegiance to the
To the flag. The United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation, their God.
Invisible.
Liberty.
Justice for all.
Good job.
Well done Xavier.
Thank you Xavier.
Alright.
President Schur, um I'd like to ask if this board can uh take a moment of silence for all the victims in Israel right now that which currently a death toll is over a thousand people with over three thousand injured.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman, for our, yes, a moment of silence, please. Alright, thank you. Alright, Trish, hit it. Roll call.
Alright, Alderman King. Alderman Farrar.
Here.
Alderman Adamowski.
Here.
Elderwoman Tara.
Here.
Alderman Cassetti.
Here.
Alderman Janetti.
Here.
Alderman Knapp.
Here.
Alderman Hardy.
Here.
Alderman Yaman.
Here.
Alderman Rivers.
Here.
Alderman Mamone.
Here.
President Schur.
Here.
Alderman Lovinsky.
Here.
Alderman Durante.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Actually, six, two, eight, one is uh King.
King. Oh, okay. So you have a full house. You have fourteen present.
He's just not labeled. Uh alright, perfect attendance from the, from one teacher to the students. Great job, guys. A plus for the day. Alright, so minutes for approval. We had two sets. They both were from the same night, and I think everyone was at both of them um that was there. So September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, we had the special meeting uh resignation and election. And then immediately after, we had the full Board of Alderman meeting. Do I have a motion to accept those?
Motion to accept.
Motion by Mamone.
Second.
Second by Lovinsky. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed or abstaining? Alright, motion carries. Um alright, so uh we'll move into the public session. Just a quick reminder of of the public session rules. Please uh limit yourself to uh one time speaking, um one power-packed, three-minute session. Anything that's on your mind. This is your chance to address the Board of Aldermen, and uh if you could um please um try, try to uh identify yourself, name, and and where you're from, just so if if there's any potential follow-up. So is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak tonight? We'll look around. We have a couple pages of people. Second call, anyone from the public who wishes to speak?
Hi.
Jackie, would you like to speak?
Yes, please. I actually have a question mainly um to go about getting a sign for a deaf person um living on for uh North Main Street. I was wondering how to do that.
Alright, I believe you would go to the
Traffic commit.
Yeah, the traffic, which is the the police meeting, and I believe they're meeting tomorrow.
Oh, perfect.
Chief is on.
Would you like me to answer that?
Yes.
Hi Jackie, it's Chief, it's Chief Williams from the Police Department. So
Hi, Chief Williams.
Hello, all you have to do is address a letter to the Board of Police Commissioners. And you can send that attention of the Board of Police Commissioners uh to the Ansonia Police Department at sixty-five Main Street.
Yep.
Just explain what you're looking for, and they meet the first Wednesday of each month, and they meet here at the Police Department at five o'clock. So if you want to come, you can send the letter, and we'll consider the letter at that meeting. You can also come to the meeting and speak if you like.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Jackie, can I have your name?
Yeah.
Yep, so Jackie, J A C K I E Daniels, D A N I E L S.
And you're from Ansonia?
Yes.
Yep, perfect. Uh anyone else from the public who wishes to speak tonight? Go to the other page.
Oh, I would.
I have a voice on Instagram.
I would.
Okay, um Chris, if this is on twenty-two, this on
Yes, this is about my parking space at twenty-two Silver Hill Road.
Alright, we we uh realized that last, last month.
No, I'm still gonna talk about it, because I've got two petitions from all the neighbors, the people who live here, who say it is a safety issue and that it is needed. There are other people who have gone and sent letters to you to that say it's a safety issue, and it's not just for me. I'm not def- I'm definitely not gonna be the only one over here who's going and benefiting from this. You've gone and told me that it was an easement issue, which it has not been, has not ever been, and told me that for three years. And the P and Z also overstuffed their authority when they went and they blocked the right of way in front of my house by putting a stone there. I want the same right as anybody else to go and park in front of my house. The same right that anybody else has when they walk out of their house, and then they walk out onto the street. I still have to go and finish building my stairs. I'm gonna finish, I'm gonna put in another part of wall over there like I put in the other forty feet of wall in front of my house. And I've also been trying to do that to help the neighbor to keep their house from sliding in. So out of all of this and out of my own pocket, so out of all this, the people who live here, myself, other people who have gone and sent you letters, that they will benefit from it as well, because it will be safer. It is a very dangerous spot on the road. And you're still refusing this because of some, obviously someone's personal agenda. Someone was saying last, last month that you're afraid that people are gonna be going and parking airplanes on the public land. Well, that's another misconception you have, because I'm trying to put this in the right of way. It's not a piece of public land. I mean, it's not a piece of parcel, a land that the town owns. It's the right of way that everybody has to go and exit or safely go and enter and leave their own property.
Correct. It's a right of way. It's not a parking spot, and we ruled
Yes, the parking place is in front of every single other house in town. That's a right of way. The sidewalk, the right of way. Now you're trying to tell me something that it's not, when that's exactly what it is.
Chris.
And you seem to refuse, you seem to refuse to
Adamos.
Comprehend that it's not an easement.
Shut it down.
Shut, shut it
Down.
Oh, why? Because I'm actually going and making some sense?
You're out of order.
I am importantly out of order.
You don't make no sense.
Three minutes.
You're three minutes.
This is not in order.
This is Chris McCarskey, twenty-two Silver Hill Road, since he didn't
Yes.
Anyone else from the public who wishes to speak tonight?
Well, no, I'm still not finished.
Shut him down. Three minutes is over.
Three minute time limit.
You, you completely made a mistake last mon- last month when you're set, trying to go and compare it to land, to city land. It's not, it's the right of way for everybody.
Thank you.
Alright, I don't like to edit people, but um we've ruled on this uh two different times already, and
Seven times.
Four years.
Seven times in three years.
We're not, we're not revisiting this one again. Alright, anyone else from the public who wishes to speak tonight? Any topics?
You lose everything wrong for the last three years.
Last call, public session. Seeing none, we'll close the public session, and we'll move on to public official session. Mayor Cassetti.
Good evening, President Schur, members of the Board of Aldermen and residents of the great city of Ansonia. Tonight, I would like to begin by expressing that my thoughts and prayers are with the people of Israel tonight. And I thank um Gary Farrar for bringing up the moment of silence on this horrific attack on Israel over the weekend. Thank you very much. Now, on a much brighter note, I would like to introduce Xavier Calvail, who has been serving as mayor for the day since this afternoon. Now Xavier has had a great time checking out our Ansonia Senior Center, our police station, and the Ansonia Opera House. Plus, he got a record, he got to record a robo-call with me promoting the Autumn Festival at the Ansonia Nature Center. In fact, he can tell you a little more about it right now.
The Autumn Fest will take place on Saturday, October twenty-first, from ten AM until three PM. Enjoy a haunted trail, board a horse, a drawn wagon, and taste some fresh apple cider and donuts. And proceed to benefi- benefit upcoming progress, projects at the Ansonia Nature Center. That's Saturday, October twenty-first, at the uh Nature Center.
Thank you, Mayor Xavier. And let me tell you something, ladies and gentlemen, and Board of Aldermen members. This day started at one o'clock, and now it's what, ten after seven? I can't begin to tell you how wonderful this little man is, this, this, this mayor. He asked so many questions. The day went by so smooth. We brought him to Ansonia Copper and Brass, to SHW, to Farrell's, to Abe Stone Park, to the Opera House, to the Senior Center, to the um Ansonia Police Department. He even got a chance to lock John Marini in a jail cell, which was wonderful. And then he was able to unlock him and get him out of there. But regardless, he asked so many questions, and they were such, such smart questions. I, I, I am utterly impressed with this, this little man. He really did a tremendous job, and I want to give him a, a, a great round of applause at this time.
We're all muted. We're all muted.
Yeah.
It left John locked up.
Now, now I am assembling an informal advisory panel tonight to advise an implementation of improvements to citywide fields. As you know, we are asking voters to consider the borrowing of ten million dollars for the repair and upgrade of fields serving all sports in our city. This group of Ansonia residents, all very passionate about youth sports and involved in a variety of city leagues, would help by ensuring all sports are represented in their repairs and improvements. Their names as follows. Amy Breggio from ten Clifford Drive, Jeff Bryce from four La Robetares, Tim Holman from fifteen Ford Street, Kevin Rowley from sixty-two Webb Street, or Webb Terrace, Sean Rowley, eleven Dempsey Court, Ann Lynch, fifteen Birchwood Drive, Steve Kish, twenty-one Cent Chester Street, Robert Jones, twenty-nine Hawensky Way, Robert Evans, two Glenridge Drive, and Nick Baben at ten Upland Terrace. Finally, I want to again congratulate this Board of Aldermen for your support for the work being done at SHW and Ansonia Copper and Brass. Your support of our acquisition of the properties and our applications for funding has resulted in another round of grant funding to continue demolition at the site. This will allow us to continue on what perhaps the number one most vital project, the clearing of new space to create new jobs and new opportunities for our city. That's it for now. Thank you, and God bless you all, and God bless the city of Ansonia.
Thank you. Hey, Mayor, before you kick off there, I have a question for the mayor for the day Xavier. Actually, I have two questions. Uh Xavier, uh did the mayor make you watch westerns today? Westerns on TV? No?
They made me turn them off.
Yeah.
Did he buy you any donuts?
No.
Alright, so we'll take, we'll take that up with the mayor later, but uh great you.
He didn't buy me pizza though.
Oh, there we go.
Ah.
Pizza over donuts any day. Nice job, Mayor.
That's right.
Nice job Xavier.
Thank you, everybody.
Alright, next up, uh Corporation Council, John Marini.
Alright, Mr. President, uh Mayor Cassetti and Mayor Xavier. Um guys, thank you so much for getting me out of that cell. Wasn't really funny to put me there in the first place. But um we had a wonderful time today. Uh thank you Xavier for uh being with us. And uh this Board of Aldermen should really hear his suggestions and input on Ansonia Copper and Brass, which is of course, as the mayor said, our, our biggest project and one that we're really moving full steam ahead on. Thanks to the residents and this board, allowing us to take possession of the properties and successfully apply for funding that, that's going to make the difference. Um Sheila's gonna talk a little more about the details of those successful applications and just what the money's going to be used for. Uh and in terms of other projects, we have some discussions uh later in this meeting um to touch on regarding our old police station and a sliver of land um elsewhere in Ansonia, both of which could be potentially uh going to private owners. Other than that, uh in those later discussions, I, I would say um open the floor for any questions, and again, a wonderful job moving these projects forward.
Any questions uh from the Aldermen for uh Attorney Marini tonight? Alright, you're off the hook. Uh Economic Development Director Sheila O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh Mayor Xavier, Mayor Cassetti, members of this board. Um it was, it was truly a pleasure to have Mayor Xavier today with us. He was a phenomenal, very bright young man, and uh he's got a bright future ahead of him. Wanted to just quickly update you on um SHW and Ansonia Copper and Brass. And to also say, you know, again, we, we say it all the time, but this board gives us the authority to move forward on grants and to move forward with these properties. And the key is to get, is to get them reoccupied. And with SHW, as I've said before, we have a steel manufacturer, and we also have a fuel cell at this point. Um but we're continuing to clean, demolish, put in an access road, and put in site pads. And um to that end, we did receive um, we, we had put together a brownfields application for, for continued funding for SHW for the access road and the site pads. And um with the help and guidance of Benu Chandi from the Department of Economic and Community Development, she steered us in a different direction for a different pool of funds, and we ended up getting six point seven million dollars in uh bond front, funds from the uh Connecticut Department of Environmental and Deep. Right? We ended up getting uh funding, funding from Deep uh to the tune of six point seven million dollars. That's gonna go a long way and get our get our tenant in there. We want to get the steel manufacturer in there, and we have to renovate a building, so we're gonna need every last penny of that. Um and in addition to the six point seven we, we uh received last week, uh Senator Cabrera and the state delegation have been pushing to get us some bond funds for demolition of Ansonia Copper and Brass. So we put together an application. Um he lobbied uh on our behalf, and we ended up getting two point five million dollars from the state bond commission. So um very appreciative of that. That will go towards demolition on Ansonia Copper and Brass, and we're just gonna start clearing those buildings down, making a path to, to a, a brand-new industrial park or commercial park. So it's, it's um, you know, it's, it, it will go a long way towards those efforts, and uh very grateful for that. Onward to the next grant application, right? They'll be coming forward to this board. I'm very happy to um very happy to see all the progress with, with this board's help and mayor's direction and my team. Grant helpers.
Alright, any questions for uh Economic Development tonight from the Aldermen?
Yes, uh Sheila, can you clarify something? Um the only announcement that I saw on this was from uh the state representative. And um there was, there was a mention of um, I'm not sure if it was the six point seven or the two point something for demolition of the American Brass Casting Shop. Uh can you comment on that, please?
So it's two point five million for the Ansonia Copper and Brass demolition of those of buildings on the Ansonia Copper and Brass site.
That's the two, that's the casting shop?
Two point five million of bond funds.
Okay.
And then the six point seven, those are also bond funds, but they're discretionary money from the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. So if the Commissioner of Deep wants to, to use his discretionary money for Ansonia, which he agreed to, um and Benu Chandi at DECD lobbied for that uh funding to go to Ansonia, we were able to get that six point seven million dollars. We had put together a grant application for brownfields, but um they thought that this pot of money was gonna be more appropriate and actually more available. So that will be for SHW.
So just two clarifications. On the two point five million for
Yep.
the American uh brass demolition, assuming that is the old casting shop. The, the, is, is that going to be done before the bridge is replaced, or does that wait for the bridge to be done first?
Um, you know, that's a, those are great questions. Um I think the funding for the bridge is gonna come in before the demolition funding. So um whatever, listen, whatever pool of money comes in faster, what, whatever we can access quicker, um get the financial assistance agreements in place, we'll begin doing that. I don't think that will detour, deter the demolition. I think probably get the bridge in place first, though, Steve.
Okay, and then one final question. On the six point seven million from Deep, is that for environmental remediation, or can that be used for other things such as a demolition?
That, that is for um both cleanup, demolition, and it will be um help lay the groundwork for the road, the access road and the site pad. So kind of a general pool of funds, but definitely for brownfield sites, and this site certainly qualifies. So um and so does building twelve, where there's a lot of contamination to clean up in that building as well.
Okay, a- at some point, I assume you'll have a plan that you can share um in terms of how those funds would, would be used.
Absolutely. Yep.
Well, thank, well, 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 thank you, and that's, that's very encouraging.
Thank you.
Josh?
Yes.
Okay, um through you, Josh, uh to uh Alderman Adamowski, you you stated at the beginning that this was from a from your state representative, was
No, I, I, I saw an email from the state representative um that had that amount in it for the demolition of the casting shop. That's what led to my, my question.
Yeah, well
I did not, I did not see anything on the six uh point seven.
Well, I wanted to just be clear that uh this came from Senator Cabrera, and only Senator Cabrera. Uh he was instrumental in this whole thing, and he worked with Sheila, who is re- really the one that puts everything together, and uh no one else should get any credit for that.
Okay, well, this is why I'm asking the question. I appreciate the uh clarification.
Any other questions? Uh for Economic Development tonight from the Aldermen?
Yes.
Yep.
Sheila.
Yes, Chicago. Yes, Alderman Rivers.
Um, do we have any updates on um the state, uh what they're doing with Franklin Street?
Yeah, so they, they're in the middle of design work on that for the, for the drainage of Franklin Street, and they're gonna you know, I believe they're gonna start in the spring to, to start doing a complete, you know, redo of the, of the drainage situation, but they have, they have been out there. And I know the mayor, uh the mayor knows more about it, but they have been out there as of late to do some preliminary work on that street. But I, I think you're gonna see in the spring um the reconstruction.
Okay. I've seen them out there too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll get you an update for the next uh board meeting. I, I'll, I'll get in touch with DOT and but I think they had said the spring was what they were estimating.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any, anyone else? Alright, moving on. Uh Police Chief Wayne Williams.
There we go. Couldn't get the mute button off. Um good evening, um Board of Aldermen, Mayor. Uh first, it's with my uh deepest condolences to advise you of the passing of Floyd Moore. Uh Floyd had served the city of Ansonia Police Department for over twenty-seven years, serving as lieutenant. Uh he worked on every major case here for over fifteen years as a detective sergeant, and I offer our thoughts and prayers out to uh Floyd Moore's family. Um to give you a quick update on our personnel, uh we have one, uh we have three new officers that have been released from field training, so you'll see them on the street. Uh we have one officer still in field training. Uh we have another officer waiting to start the academy next month. And we have three open positions that we're in different phases of testing for. We also have an open dispatcher position that we uh have candidates in background right now, so hoping to have some of these filled in the very near future. Uh I know one of the major complaints we get on a regular basis is uh speeding and traffic enforcement, so I want to let you know that those extra speed enforcement patrols have still been going out. And additionally, I applied for, it looks like we're gonna be granted a twenty-five thousand dollar grant for DUI enforcement that'll take place during holiday seasons and busy uh summer seasons. We also applied for and expect to receive a twenty-five thousand dollar grant for distracted driving. I'm sure as you drive around, you see people talking on their cellphones, et cetera, while they're driving. So uh those are two grants that'll help cover some of the costs that we have applied for. We expect to get. Um the light at Manay Kingston, just a quick overview. I know that there were some concerns. It had been out for quite a while. It is back um functioning again. We had to finally replace the box and some of the lights uh at that intersection. Uh I know John, Sheila, the mayor uh worked with me to uh get the funding um to replace that box, so it is up and running. Um I see uh Joe DiBacco is on. Joe and I are working on a new school resource officer um mutual agreement um that needs to be uh updated based on some new laws that were passed by the legislature uh concerning the SRO position. Um and we're gonna be using that agreement for the high school, and hopefully the uh middle, a new middle school uh SRO in the very near future. Um citywide events, the Harvest Festival went off without a hitch, so that was great. And I want to let you know, we also hosted a car seat clinic in which we checked numerous uh people's car seats for them. Um we did find that five of them um were older car seats and needed to be replaced, and in a partnership with Griffin Hospital, we replaced those uh car seats uh at no cost to the uh, to the owner. So uh that was a great uh, a great event for us. Um if I, you have any questions, I would gladly answer them.
Any question?
Chief, it's, yeah, I got one, chief. So those, um I think, not sure if it was two or three months back, we, we received, and I think it installed those um, those roadside speed cameras. Are we getting any data from those just yet?
We are starting to get the data back, and actually, we're considering moving uh them now. So uh there are some regulations as what we can do with them in the first year. But uh we've gotten a um one, another street that we want to move one to. Um so we're starting to go through the data now. And if you like, at the next meeting, I can uh kind of go over what the data had to say for the uh, for those two locations that they're at.
Just let me know if my plate is on any of them, chief. I'd appreciate that.
It's probably on there multiple times, but I'll get back to you.
Yes.
Thanks, chief.
Send the ticket.
Any other questions for the chief from the Aldermen? Oh, Joe, Joe Cassetti?
Yes, through you, Josh. Uh chief, I want to thank you for um the speed uh operation that you got going on on north, on north uh Cliff Street there, near the Assumption School. Uh that's like a raceway. Uh, I, I've noticed that there's more patrolling going on in that area. And, uh, if they go up that area, I notice they always come down past the school. I appreciate that attention that they're giving the, uh, Assumption School area.
Yes, thank you very much. I will pass that along. We've increased our, uh, presence at, uh, several schools and the areas of several schools, including Ford Street as well. We've been getting a, a lot of complaints up there. So, uh, we will continue to address the complaints, uh, as I've said at every meeting. Um, I, I think I've, might have received a complaint from almost every street in the city at this point, including Dead Ends. Um, so I will, uh, we will keep addressing them, uh, a- as allowed. And like I said, the funding, these extra grants that we get from the state. Uh, uh, really, really helps, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? All right. Well, as usual, thank you for coming.
All right, no problem, sir.
We appreciate it. Uh, next up, um, Dr. DiBacco. Uh, well tinted, I see.
Yeah, yes, well tinted. Thank you. Um, uh, good evening, uh, President Schuer and, uh, members of the Board of Aldermen. Uh, this evening, I, I believe I have two exciting things to share, um, that's happening with your local school system. Um, we most recently were asked by the Connecticut State Department of Education. To present at Kent, Central Connecticut State University regarding our dual credit programs. The, uh, program was hosted by the Commissioner of Education and the Governor. Um, I was fortunate to, uh, be able to bring two of our students, Paul Palmer and Fahima Chowdhury. They did an excellent job presenting, um, regarding the, uh, dual credit opportunities that we have at Ansonia, uh, High School. Presently, we have eight partnerships with Institutes of Higher Learning where our students are able to acquire credits. Um, it was enlightening for some people in the audience because both students shared that. To date, they have accumulated over fifty college credits. And just so you know, put that in perspective, so that's about a year and a half of college. Uh, that they have, uh, checked off the list. Savings to parents, but also, uh, a, a great opportunity for our students. And, um, just last year alone. Our seniors accumulated over nine hundred college credits on their way to after graduation. So, um, I, I. I was very proud that the Connecticut State Department of Education asked, asked Ansonia to, uh, to speak and to present at this event. Um, it, it says a lot about our partnerships and the programs that we have, and it's something that. Will lead into my next, uh, topic that I wanted to share is that, um. We most recently got asked, and Sonya Public Schools was asked to partner with sister schools in South Korea. And let me explain, there were four districts in the state that were asked. Avon, uh, Newtown, Cheshire. And Ansonia. Yep, we, we fit in the same category. So just know that. Socioeconomically speaking, otherwise, we are in the same category. We were asked to partner with. Sister schools in South Korea to work on projects, uh, collaboratively with, um, our. With students, um, in South Korea. The two projects, one's on robotics and one is on desalination. Uh, hopefully there's a culminating project at, at the very end. Um, had we had more notice, our students would actually be presenting at. The largest STEM conference in Asia in South Korea and, um, our students were asked, and all the students from Connecticut were asked by the, uh. Ministry of Education of South Korea to attend this event, um, due to the short notice and some of the fundraising that would need to be, uh. That would need to, uh, undertake. Um, I think we'll make sure our students, uh, participate in person, um. In, in the subsequent years, but right now to be asked to, um, be part of such a project and to participate. It really helps globalize our campus and let our, give our, our students a leg up. It's just a phenomenal, phenomenal experience. And to be asked to speak, you know, at both of these events or to be present at, at these events, uh. Says a lot about our students and, uh, the programs that are being offered right now. And I just wanted to highlight those things, and I'm here to answer any questions that anyone has.
Any questions for the superintendent?
Well, I have a, um, a comment. I just wanna thank her for doing an excellent job here in Ansonia.
In Chicago, I have stuff in my office for you, Chicago Rivers. After, after the last Board Alderman meeting, I made sure I had something. And I sent him a text message, so everyone knows, and there's a picture, if there's proof, he just has to come pick it up.
Yeah, and, uh, getting back a little late, uh, to catch you.
Not a problem, Alderman Rivers, but.
Thank you.
Any, uh, any questions?
Josh, I have a question. Dr. DiBacco, is it just the funding as the reason that they can, that the students can't attend? Or is it the timeline?
It, it's the, the time, yes, it's the timeline. We were asked, um, very late to the party, um, and normally like, for example, our global scholar students. They spend like the whole year prior, you know, fundraising and, and they have, uh, a hell of a push moving forward to get that money, but. We were, um, we were asked in September to, to be partners on this project. And it's something that, just so you know, when I presented it to students and I went with the Assistant Superintendent and to our science teachers. They were, they were on board a million percent, but. We're doing it. We, we started it in September and they have to finish and fundraise and. Some of our kids are playing sports, they're doing other activities to get the funding necessary by. The week before, um, the holiday is also very hard for me to ask any families or anyone else before the holidays for, um. For monies at this time. Um, I did try some, uh, private, uh. Donors and private avenues to see if some people would do a, if their business would do a match, um. But, um, it, it's, um, a lot of people have their, their donations or they're already set up for the year and. I just think in the following years and subsequent years, we'll make sure that the kids get to go. To be, to be asked by the, uh, the Ministry of Education to show up at. At the STEM Conference there in South Korea. That's a once in a lifetime kind of experience for our students. So I, I hope. In the, in upcoming years, it's, the partnership is gonna be there. So yeah, Bobby, you're right. It's just, the timeline is just too, too quick. And some of our kids don't have passports. Only four of our kids would be able to go right now. Because, uh, the time needed to get an international passport and, uh, I mean, to get a passport. And it has to, uh, so only four of our kids at this time would be able to go.
Yeah, let's get on this early next year to make sure we can get those kids there.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Any other questions from the Alderman? I have one question for you. Um, speaking of innovative, um, the potential partnership between the, the Board of Ed and the, uh. Ambulance service. You guys have been discussing a potential class that the students could become, uh, take, take the E M T courses. Is there been any movement on that?
Yes, there was just an information session. Um, Chief Warhola, um, ran, uh, an info session. I heard it was very well attended. Um, I think students are going to have to do it. Uh, a lot of it's on their own time, um, but, um, hopefully we're gonna support it. But from my understanding, there was, uh, there was a lot of interest in that E M T, um, program. And, um, Chief Warhola has been in contact with our building principal and myself. A bunch of times. So, um, if we, if the kids are interested in it, we'll, we'll make it happen the best we can.
Great, thank you. All right, last, last call for questions. We got them here. All right, thank you for coming.
You got it. Thank you.
So ends our public official session. Move on to, uh, reports, financial reports, the finance committee. Anyone? Finance committee, anybody?
Think you're looking for a motion to accept.
Pay bill?
Pay the bill.
Motion to pay all bills if deemed correct. Sorry, couldn't get off mute.
Second by not. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right, motion carries. Um, boat, uh, there was the board, board, um, Board of Aportionment and Taxation did not meet in October. So we don't have the, uh, report there yet, so we'll skip that. Uh, next up, we have the tax collector report and request for refunds. The request for refunds was in the amount of two thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-six cents.
Make a motion.
Motion by Rivers, second by Tar. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimously. Uh, and then we have the rest of the monthly reports, and I, I do wanna give a shout out to all those, um, department heads that do submit those to us. We do read them. Um, and, you know, they're included in our packet, so we appreciate the information that comes in, even if we don't have to actually vote on it. Can I get a motion to accept all of the monthly and the annual reports and place them on file?
Motion.
Motion by Rivers?
Second.
Second.
Second by not again. All in favor? Opposed or abstaining? All right, unanimous. Uh, actions and claims, we had one zero nine dash two three dash one oh four six Benchmark Municipal Tax Service.
Motion to refer to counsel.
Second.
Motion by Yaman, second by Tar to refer to counsel. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Right, motion carries unanimous. We had one communication that was in your packet and also had a, an accompanying, um. Spreadsheet in the back. This was a request for, uh, bu- budget allocation, um. For fall twenty-three and spring twenty-four for the Ansonia Soccer Club. The request was for two thousand dollars for the fall season and two thousand for the spring season and the, in the, uh, supporting document was in there. Are there any questions, comments? Um.
Mr. President? I think a, uh, a question was conveyed to staff earlier last week, which is the account and what remains in the account.
Yep.
So there was a twenty thousand dollar, uh, starting balance in an account set aside for recreation. Um, eight thousand was allocated to football, so we currently have twelve thousand dollars. Um, so in speaking with, uh, Kurt Miller about this, um, through finance. We would be left with eight thousand in that account if this request was, was satisfied as requested. As currently worded.
Wait a minute.
Wait, yeah.
No.
Yeah.
That, that's not good math.
Twelve minus four, twenty minus eight is twelve, twelve minus four is eight.
I thought it was for two.
Eight thousand.
I thought it was for two.
To what?
Two for the fall and two for the spring.
Yeah, the total of four thousand was the request, two thousand. Hiring the refs and, and all the other ancillary costs that were included there.
Mr. President, can I just ask a clarifying question?
Yep.
The, the, the football allocation, that was from the twenty-three, twenty-four. Budget year and not from twenty-two, twenty-three?
That was my question.
I thought that original request came in during the twenty-two, twenty-three budget cycle. And we approved it during that cycle. I wa- so I wasn't sure. Just wanted to clarify that if we could.
So Rich could give double clarification, but my, my direct understanding. From Mr. Miller is that it was from twenty-three, twenty-four, that football allocation.
Couldn't have been.
That was my understanding.
No, it was. It, guys, it was. We talked about that. It's on the minutes too. It was when we did it, it was on the. It missed the, the June cutoff, because if we recall, we had a conversation about them requesting money for the prior year.
Yes.
Didn't do that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And I had mentioned to Chi- Chi- Chicago, you asked about it, and I said there was no roll forward of those funds. It starts new at twenty grand every year. Which then, when we approved the eight thousand, it came off the new replenishment of twenty thousand, I believe in July.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Tony. I appreciate the clarification.
I mean, I think, I think the needs were well documented and, and they note in their letter that it doesn't, that doesn't like. Fully fund them. They still do fundraising and, and other things to make it meet. So I thought that's very reasonable and in line with what they've asked. I mean. Personally, I would support the, the full allocation.
Well, I make a motion to, uh, support, uh, the full allocation.
Good. Second.
Motion by Rivers, second by Cassetti. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, so we will get that, uh, transferred over to them. Thank you. Uh, resignations, we have none. Resolutions, there was one from Economic Development. Um, Sheila can jump in if, if need be, but this was, uh, Department of Economic and Community Development Urban Grant, five hundred thousand dollars. Resolve that Mayor David S. Cassetti be and hereby authorized to accept on behalf of the City of Ansonia. A D E C D Urban Act Grant in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. Combined with the fifteen hundred dollars we received for a total of two, two million dollars, sorry, fifteen, one point five million. Uh, for a total of two million for the remediation and demolition of the former S H W Casting Company. And then further resolve that, uh, Mayor David S. Cassetti is hereby authorized to enter into an execute, e- execute. Any and all agreements, contracts and documents necessary to obtain said grant.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Rivers, second by Yaman. Any discussion on this? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you.
No brainer.
Thank you.
Um, we have no appointments this month, uh, no ordinance, no new business, um. Old business, we have the two items that were on the.
Mr. President, may I just ask, that new business that came through, uh, late, do we need to make a motion to add that?
Well, no, because the, the mayor ended up, uh, addressing that in his, in his speech and explained that it wasn't actually, um. A new committee, it was just, uh, advisor, advisory people from the different sports that he wanted to be able to talk to through the process.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
Corporation Council, do you wanna clarify anything on that or?
Yep, it's just an advisory group that the mayor would like to consult as we, um, seek to, A, obtain the funding. And of course, B, uh, implement the funding to ensure all sports are evenly represented when making, uh. Uh, decisions. And of course, this Board of Aldermen will be a vital part of that as well.
Thank you, John.
Oh, Mr. President?
Yep.
I do, can I just say very quickly that, um, I just wanted to mention because Mr. William Pendolphy. Of Rig Street is, um, uh, we, there was some confusion about appointing to him to the Elderly Commission. And we will do that next month, or the mayor will submit his name to you for consideration. I just want him to. To know that we're, you know, we're gonna do that next month. William Pendolphy.
Okay.
All right, sorry, thank you.
All right, thank you. So yeah, Joe, no, no, nothing to do on that, um, officially, but good question. Um, all right, so moving into old business, we have, um. Item number one, potential sale of city property. A was to Elm Street. Sale of property to Fretus LLC for use as a data center. We, we had, uh. Discuss this, um, and voted on it last month. Um. After looking at those proposals and then, uh, the public hearing, there were, there were no public comments on, on note on that. Uh, John, do you have anything you wanna add on behalf of the city?
Yeah, I want to, because these properties are both at two different points of progress in the sale process, right? So to Elm Street, which is of course the old police station, that's basically at the end of the line. Um, this board had voted at the last meeting to accept a prevailing bid from Fretus. Uh, to develop this property as a data center. So everything we needed for approvals has been accomplished except for, for last month, except for the public hearing pursuant to. Um, state statute. That was accomplished earlier tonight. So basically, all we need is a final vote of the Board of Aldermen to, uh, proceed with the sale and the closing could occur. And the property will change hands. So that's at the very end of the process. With respect to Forty-Eight Silver Hill, um, it still needs to go to bid. However, I would propose, um, pursuant to what you see on the agenda tonight. That this be sent to bid under section two dash one twenty-five eleven of the ordinances. Which deals with properties of a non-significant size. And of course, you know, what's the significance of that? This is a sliver of property abutting to private owners in an otherwise residential, uh, neighborhood. The idea is to pursuant to this, uh, ordinance, put it out to bid exclusive to these two properties. Because really, this property will only have use, um, to the adjoining property owners. This is not a, a buildable lot. This is not something for commercial. This is really an, an add-on, right, to an existing lot. And under the ordinance, you as the Board of Aldermen are allowed to put it out to bid in a limited manner to those two properties that would, um, would benefit from it. And so what would happen is if you agreed on that, we proceed to a bid, it would go out to those two bidders, and then we'd follow the remainder of the steps. We've already taken care of it with respect to the public hearing that happened earlier tonight, so we wouldn't have to do that again. Um, but basically, you know, it, it needs to go out to bid and it needs to satisfy those following requirements of, of getting bids in and, and of. Getting a winning bidder. So it would come back to you. Two Elm Street would not. Two Elm Street would end after approval tonight.
Okay, I make, um, um, motion on A on, uh, Two Elm Street.
Okay, so motion to finalize the sale as, as, uh, agreed before by Rivers. Do we have a second?
Second.
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 Discussion?
Yeah. Discussion?
So, John, the the property behind it, which is looking pretty rough, that that is not included in this sale, correct?
That's not included in the sale.
That was it, thank you.
Any other uh questions or comments regarding uh Two Elm?
I had a question about parking, how many parking spaces is the new business going to need?
That would really be a matter of zoning, so if the sale went through, they would of course have to get the approvals from our land use boards, including zoning. And parking requirements would be uh discussed, established and clarified at the time. Um, I don't know, Sheila, in the discussion with the uh, you know, a- after the bidding process concluded. Um, do you have any light, uh could shed any light on parking spaces for the?
Um, I don't know, but I know that um. That the reuse is going to be less um.
Intensive.
Left employees than the police department, so. You know, for instance, if there's about ten employees. Then that, those parking requirements are gonna be. Even less than what PD was using, but John's right, it has to go before P um P and Z.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you. Good question. Uh, any other questions on this? All right, we have a motion to to complete and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries, so we'll, we'll, uh, John, that's in your hands. Uh, and then on item B, Forty-Eight Silver Hill.
I make that motion.
I'll second.
Uh, motion by Rivers, second by Yaman, any discussion on this one?
Just a, just a question for John.
Yep.
Um, John, can you comment on the size of the property and whether or not it's a um uh qualifies as a building lot?
Um, it is a small sil- a sliver of property, and really, the specific definition really falls to um. To land use, I think we can show, we have a graphic of that, that we can show.
We look it up and, or drive by it, it's.
That'd be good, um, which we can. Sheila, did you happen to have that?
Okay, so thi- this, this is not a building lot where someone could.
No.
It's not, Steve.
No.
It is not at all.
That's, that's, that's all I'm getting at.
Yeah, no, it's not.
Yeah, this has been before us before also.
Very small, yeah.
And has there been any appraisal on the property?
So this is exactly what we're waiting on before we would put this out to bid, so we would put it out to bid with an appraisal. Even though it is a limited bid to the two.
Okay, so you, so you can compare the limited bid to the appraisal so that it is not. Um, you know, the, the, the bid is not so far off as to be.
Exactly.
Disadvantageous to the city, okay, that's great.
Yep, and that's really part of the process, is the city should be obtaining an appraisal before it goes out to bid, that way, exactly, exactly. We could match those bids against some objective baseline.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that, it's great.
All right, any other questions or comments? It's all good. All right, so we have a motion to send it to bid under section two dash one two five eleven. Uh, for cities, uh uh city code for properties of non-significant.
You know, if if I wasn't clear also, you you would be accepting the winning bid as always, so when those bids, and they're coming back to this board, so nothing is being sold here in this one without your further action.
Yep, so we have a motion, a second, all in favor of proceeding as stated?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimous, thank you. Um, we have no executive session for the first time in, I think, recent history.
Hit it, Chicago.
Says Chicago, hit it, baby.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
You weren't gonna miss that one, Joe.